Yeah.
You still, you still have your. Isn't that right?
About an insulated one.
Well, yeah, that one that you had wasn't, well, it wasn't a bad deal. You got a hell of a deal.
But it was, I found out when it got to ten, ten degrees and more. Warm in there.
No, no, no.
Fucking tricky.
Yeah.
So, have you been down by the.
In Tannerville.
Is it open? Have you tried to walk it?
No.
I was on the guy.
Walking it is.
They're on sand. Just a custom.
It's really hot. The roundabout in Indy where you're supposed to walk is not.
Eastern plant?
Well, no.
Uh, April.
Okay.
That's, that's.
Okay.
And I go.
And that was its lane.
And the other thing.
I said, we'll get a cart.
I think it happened.
I bet you.
I don't understand why they put all those right turn lanes.
He, yeah, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, he's still.
Speeds up traffic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Purpose of the right turn lane is so that.
Well, I tell you what, you know, years I've been out.
I'm twenty-three.
You, you, you take one of them. You know, bigger heaters. Yeah. And, uh.
I know.
If you can get that back where you're, you know, with seals pretty good, I tell you what, you can get it pretty warm.
There has been a discussion.
Yeah. You can get pretty warm.
With the large left turn lane and.
I, I.
Two.
Today I do it. Yeah, I do too.
So that, at least at the crossing on Fourth Street, is that where, or where do we want the kids to cross? Fourth Street or Broadway, Fourth Street. Or Broadway. On Broadway, they only have to cross.
I don't know, it winds faster.
If you have that right turn lane. You have to cross a half lane.
What's that?
And.
Yes, yes, it's, it's seven o'clock.
When you cross the street, if you think of SUVs, and I think of them a lot because I'm short like kids. When you, the right lane stops and the other lane speeds by, they don't see those kids crossing.
I don't know, that's not.
They can't see them.
Is that their regular?
That's why you only want three lanes. It's safer for the pedestrian.
Or is that just a planning board? I don't know if they have.
It's called traffic.
You know, we're only there for what, ten, fifteen minutes rather than, yeah. So I didn't know if they could, if they could have this during their regular township meeting. Yeah, whatever, yeah. Because I'm guessing, I'm guessing they must have township meeting about seven thirty.
And it's slowest traffic. If you're gonna make the right turn and you slow down, the guy behind you has to slow down that speed down.
I know, I know, I know.
Yeah. Causing them to get children. It's not as safe. That's why they do it.
I'd like to remind everyone be. I'd like to remind everyone before we start our meeting that anyone who wishes to speak in the open forum, please sign up on the sheet in the back there. And the open forum comments, we would like to be kept at like around two minutes. And we also like to remind everyone, the city council meeting, we observed Robert's rules of order. And the public must obtain permission of the mayor before addressing the city council. Individuals who are noisy or unruly do not have the right to remain in the council chambers and may be removed. We will now call the meeting to order and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
I have a question. We have a, a motion to become a sister city with, uh, Cold Spring, Montana. Where did that come from and what does it obligate the city to do?
I received a letter from that city and they were built in nineteen twenty-three by the Foley brothers who also built Foley and that is why they want to be a sister city and so we, uh, approved it and got a proclamation and we're gonna become sister cities with them.
What does that obligate our city to do?
It's.
Nothing more than pen pills.
It's, it's symbolic. It's, it's symbolic in nature. It is not anything you're obligated to do. It is just recognizing that we are connected based on our history.
Okay. Has anyone ever been there? Because I have not been there. I've been through Montana many times.
We just got that and that's.
We don't care?
It's, well, it's nice. They're built by the same people that built Foley and that's why we're gonna be sister cities with them.
So.
There's nothing to it. Yeah, it won't cost us anything. It's just, we're gonna be sister cities. We wanted the proclamation because they're putting a time capsule in the ground and so we, we're gonna send that out to them and that'll be that.
So which city was established first, Foley or Cold Spring? Cold Strip?
Cold Strip. Cold Strip was established in nineteen twenty-three. Weaver in nineteen hundred.
Oh, okay. So we can be the big sister city.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At five thirty-three, we will now recess the regular city council meeting to conduct the public hearing on the conditional use permit site plan approval of the New Life Church. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Sarah?
If you wouldn't mind, I could just provide a quick overview. Um, this is a conditional use amendment, um, and site plan approval for a proposed church addition. We have an existing CUP on this church parcel, so we are basically providing an update to that CUP, um, based on the new addition. Not a whole lot has changed. Actually, we were able to remove some of the conditions, um, that were satisfied with the original building of the church. But, um, this is, as you can see up there, um, is just related to that new addition of the churches proposing to construct.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to? If you would like to just go up the podium, state your name and address and give us your little consent.
Pastor, uh, Jim Von Wall from New Life Church, nine thirty-one Norman Avenue North. Uh, we just, uh, I'd just like to speak in favor of it and ask the council to approve it as, uh, as presented so that we can, uh, continue to move forward with the church ministries that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at five thirty-five, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting. Can I get a motion adopting resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty approving the cup agree amendment and site plan?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now move on to the wastewater regionalization report with Jared Vogt.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, pay estimate number six for the wastewater regionalization project has been included in your packets this evening. Uh, just maybe in terms of a quick update, we had our bi-weekly construction meeting with the contractor today. Their intent, um, is to continue to, to install pipe. They've anticipated that they will be, um, putting pipe in the ground until approximately December twenty-third, depending on the weather. They'll take a, take a break, if you will, over the Christmas and New Year's holidays. And then as the nice days come back in, in February, they probably will do some work on lift stations. But not a lot of, um, pipe work until spring, um, with that project. So they're gonna continue to move forward with that. In terms of the pay estimate, uh, this evening, the work completed to date represents approximately forty percent, forty-seven percent of the overall project. Uh, they've installed approximately nine point eight miles of force main, uh, so they continue to move, uh, move along there and, and make good progress. The pay estimate, number six total for Geislinger and Sons is one million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, and we are recommending approval of that and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have this evening.
Is there any hope they might finish maybe ahead of schedule?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the overall, uh, project schedule, everything's going well. Um, I guess it's, you know, with, with it being early fall completion next year, it's a little hard to, to tell. I mean, all signs are indicating that it's positive and they're on, definitely on schedule, so, um, there's a potential, but maybe ask me that again in June and I'll have a better answer.
Yeah, I know, it depends a lot on the weather too. Does anyone else have any questions for him?
I don't have any questions. What I have to say, the work they've done, the ground that's been disturbed, you'd never know that anybody's been through there. It's awesome to see what they've done and can't tell they've been there. Thank you for the job. Really appreciate that.
Can we get a motion to pay?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you, Jared. We will now move on to adopt the updated water and sewer ordinance, moving reference to fee schedule. Now, I assume everyone got their information in the packet. Does anyone have anything to, to say on it? Then we'll just, can we get a motion to approve ordinance four seven two and four seven three?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, there is no one here for open forum, so we will move on to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, you received a stat report for the month of November. We had a total of three hundred and sixty-seven calls for the year so far. After the end of November, we had four thousand and eighty-seven. That's a three hundred and sixty-one more than last year's complete total. So last year's end of the year total was three thousand seven ninety, or seven twenty-six, so we are way ahead of last year's numbers. Um, equipment violations are, were up. Gas drive-offs, we only had one, so that is good. Um, child ICRs, that is ICRs involving the SRO, um, the majority of the SROs, um, some of his other calls get put in different categories, um, so that was up. Domestic, domestics and assaults are up. And a reminder again, no parking between November first and March thirty-first on the city streets from two AM to six AM. And I guess the only thing I have is on Thursday, I have Coco with the cop at Foley El- Elementary School and we already have twenty-six kids pre-registered and I have to cap it at thirty because I don't have that much other stuff, so. But is there any questions or anything for me?
TZD hours?
There is TD, TZD hours for DWI enforcement for, it just started here in the month of December. Um, and I put that out to the officers and way it sounds, there are a couple of them that are going to be interested in picking up some of those.
Any other questions for her? Okay, we'll move on to City Engineer, Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm the City Council. Um, tonight I just have a quick update on the Trump I twenty-three project. As you're aware, that is now open to, to traffic. I believe that was open over Thanksgiving weekend there. Um, so recent, so really all that we got going on right now is that, um, they'll be doing some cleanup work until they suspend work for the year. Um, and currently we are working with, uh, Public Works and the contractor to kind of clean up our, our quantities until like, until over this suspension period. Um, one thing that we did talk about recently, um, with staff and also with MINDOT was, uh, the push buttons for the pedestrian crossings at Broadway and at the roundabout at Eighth. Um, those were originally in our two thousand seventeen application, our funding application. Um, and somewhere along the line, uh, those appear to have been dropped in the design, um, on this, on this project. Um, so we are working with MINDOT to kind of figure out where that's at, um, whether or not we have the funds, we have the funds available for that. Um, like I said, those, that application was put in two thousand seventeen, so, I mean, that's what, six years of, uh, inflation, so we'll see if we sub the funds for that at this time, but, um, that's another thing we're looking, looking into the next, uh, probably month or so. Is the, for those push buttons that, again, those are at the Broadway and the roundabout at Eighth.
So that will be reinstated?
Sorry, what was that?
That will, that will be reinstated and put in?
Uh, we are looking into, into that right now as far as whether or not there is still funds available for that. Um, and if not, then it would be a decision, I guess, at, at the city level if they want to put those in.
How'd that happen? It got dropped out of the program?
Exactly.
Uh, that's something we are, are digging into right now as far as where that got missed in the, in the, in the MINDOT design.
So basically, it's another screw up on Mon- MINDOT's part. That whole program out there was a disaster.
I don't want to put it on, you know, say it was, is MINDOT's fault or anything. Um, they didn't, they didn't do the design. They were managing the project, I guess, but, uh, um, yeah, somewhere along the lines, I don't know if it was in the initial kickoff meetings or, like I said, the application was in two thousand seventeen, um, where that, uh, those push buttons got, got, uh, lost in the shuffle, but those were in the original application in two thousand seventeen.
Um, may I comment? Um, I have both driven and walked some of that new open road. I will tell you, it's terrifying to cross Highway twenty-three. I don't see any change. I can't see where I'm supposed to cross as a pedestrian. It's not marked adequately, especially the roundabout and on Broadway, which I thought were the two places we were encouraging children to cross. Also, I, you know, I, I attended everything that there was to attend on that thing and I thought we were gonna have three lanes. We have, I don't know how many right turn lanes on there to speed up traffic. Isn't this a project to make it safe for children to cross the street? My understanding was we were gonna have a wide left turn lane and an east and a westbound lane and no right turn lanes. Right turn lanes speed up traffic. You must have, I don't know, fifteen of them in that eight block area. And they shouldn't be there, especially on Broadway with no traffic signal now, which I didn't know about, and at the roundabout. Those right turn lanes speed up the traffic. You should have, when people make right turn, they put on their brake, the guy behind them slows down. There's only three lanes for the children to have to cross, not four. And if an SUV is in that right turn lane, believe me, the guy who's speeding by doesn't see those children. I don't understand if it's, if it's a safe walk to school, why it's designed to speed up traffic with no light. Isn't it called a safe walk to school?
Uh, it's.
Isn't that, wasn't that the grant we applied for?
Uh, we haven't called it that, I guess.
What did you call it?
Well, I think you're talking about the, what we called when we filled out the application to the transportation alternatives.
I was talking about the meetings we had with the highway department after.
That was the highway safety audit.
Okay, the highway safety audit.
But, you know, the design and those requirements and standards, those are MINDOT standards. You know, so there's only so much we can do at the local level. We know the push buttons were missed, so we are following up on those items. But as far as the design that, I mean, those were the items that were, I mean, it's not our highway, it's MINDOT's highway. So some of those items, we don't have control over. Um, those are their standards and their requirements when they install them.
Well, it's not safe for children to cross that and I sympathize with children because I am as short as children and I walk. It's not safe to cross that street at Broadway or at that roundabout. There, there's no markings to even show where you're supposed to cross. And I did put my glasses on before I tried to cross and I couldn't figure out where I was supposed to cross. And I will say that the people in the roundabout didn't know where I was supposed to cross either. You know, more importantly, the traffic is, there's no marking that shows, I mean, in town, we have those nice big white blocks now where people can see, oh, there's crosswalk here. Are there gonna be more markings for those children to cross?
Yeah. Sorry, what?
Well, I can add to this or I can help her out on this.
Alright.
Okay.
So, it's temporarily striped.
Right.
Is what they had to do. So what they're gonna do, I, we just went through this, this summer, if you put down a lead-based paint, you can't put down a latex paint first because then the lead base is not gonna stick to it. That's, that's, I'm sure their intent is to put that down, which lasts longer.
Okay.
So if they were to put white blocks down, you couldn't put the good paint down next spring.
Correct, yes.
Now with the, how many, uh, push buttons are we looking at?
Two.
So there, there aren't gonna be any push buttons in the roundabout?
Yeah, yes, there'll be one at the, on the, be the western leg of the roundabout and then one at Broadway on the east side.
So then I'm gonna go with the white RFBs or flashing, is that?
Yep.
Or are they gonna do the sign?
The RFBs.
Okay.
Yep. Is it, is what was submitted in the application.
It's a rapid flashing beacon. I'm sorry, I'm talking. So it's just a, it's just a wig-wag light that goes like this so that when you push the button, it's letting people know that
Yeah.
something's going on.
Well, they, they have to be a must because from what I've seen, that roundabout didn't slow down traffic.
I will say that there also is in the speed limit signs placed right now because MINDOT is currently doing a speed study through that area.
A what?
A speed study and they didn't want to introduce any new specs to impact that study. So, in our understanding is that study's gonna last a couple of weeks.
I heard it's done now.
Done now? Okay. So, so we should be seeing, you know, some speed, like speed limit signs coming up as you're coming to town for sure.
Well, I object to those right turn lanes. They, you know, if you read about road quieting, which was what this was supposed to do, those right turn lanes are meant to speed up traffic. We're talking about eight blocks where they have to slow down or two intersections where they have to slow down. Where children would only have to cross three lanes instead of four. We've got a high number of trucks and SUVs. Those people cannot see little children crossing and the little children cannot see the ongoing traffic. A dangerous thing for pedestrians is the guy in the right turn lane slows and lets you through and the, the ongoing traffic kills you as you walk, especially with no red light to stop them. It's very unsafe. I think you should have no right turn lane at Broadway on either side and you should have those stoplights. And I would argue you should have no right turn lanes all the way through to slow the traffic.
By stoplights, you mean the, the pedestrian crossing?
The flashing crossings. I, I would prefer the standard stoplight, but I know that that battle was not won. So the flasher, so the kids can push the button and they can go across.
Well, to speak to the, the safety, I guess, of that roundabout, I mean, that's why that was installed to, to slow traffic through there. Um, I believe the plans do, do show a fifteen mile an hour sign being installed for that roundabout. Um, and as, as Jack mentioned, that there was a, we will be striping that with the crosswalks.
Well, those crosswalks are very close to where people make a right turn onto the roundabout. So they're facing this way and they're supposed to stop for children crossing the other direction. So they don't have a second to stop if they don't have some signal that that's a crosswalk. Those pedestrian crossings are very close to the right turn lane. I mean, like twenty feet.
Yeah, I think they're back away.
I'm trying to.
I thought they would be much further out.
Right now, but, uh.
What?
So I'm, I'm trying to picture where you're talking right now, so I apologize.
Well, right by Jack and Jim's.
Right.
Where the roundabout is.
Mister Jim.
There's two crosswalks.
Yep.
And both of those crosswalks, when you enter the roundabout, so you're taking a right turn, that's right where the kids have to cross.
Mm-hmm.
And you're facing this way and making a right turn, you're not gonna see those kids in time to stop.
Drivers need to be alert.
Yeah, um, I guess you're not, I'm hoping that to answer your question as far as the speed limit and it being signed properly will help your answer there. Help answer that question as far as, you know, sixteen, fifteen miles an hour.
I'm sorry, I think it's a very dangerous thing for, for pedestrians in this town. I don't see where it's an improvement. I hope the roundabout slows the sixty-five miles.
The improvement is, we went from five lanes or six lanes wide down to four is what you're saying. That road got very narrow compared to how wide it used to be. Because we added sidewalk along the south side all the way.
Yeah, and we put the curbs in and I know that's supposed to be road quieting, but those right turn lanes are just meant to speed up traffic. They're not meant to.
They're meant to get the people that live on the south side to their house so they don't have to go all the way to the east end of town and then try and jockey back like they did all summer. That's what they're there for.
The right turn lanes?
Yes.
Well, you can turn right without having a right turn lane.
But if you have the right turn lanes, it's gonna save on a bunch of rear end accidents.
I'd rather have adults rear-ending than children getting killed.
No, we don't, we don't need the accidents. We don't need.
If I have to choose.
No, we don't need any more accidents on the road. We don't need any kids getting hit, but without the right turn lanes, you're gonna run into more trouble with accidents. That's why they put them in there.
Well, pedestrian deaths are going up. Rear end collisions seldom result in deaths at that speed. So anyway, I, I'm disappointed. I think it was a big bodge.
All the, just, uh, I mean, there's complaints on the roundabout. All the sidewalks on the roundabout are supposed to be blocked before winter, before this project is over.
Okay.
With the exception of the one on the south side going west, they can leave open. So, everything else has to be blocked off with a barricade before damages are gonna be released, you know, stop for the year. So, you won't be able to cross twenty-three at Eighth Avenue till next summer when a trail is put in there and the proper painting is put in there. So, they came yesterday and put some of the signs by sixth and moved a few of them around, but they did about half of them and didn't move the other half and then they were gone. So Rob sent another, the project manager sent another email out yesterday. But they need to get all those intersections, wherever's crossing the highway, because if somebody crosses a highway, gets to the north side, there's no sidewalk. They're stuck out in traffic. They have nowhere to go. The car's gonna come and, you know. So, they have to have a barricade in place.
Wow.
Hopefully by then, well, it'll be resolved next spring with better painting and the rest of the signs. Not all the signs are up there, so.
I think it's very dangerous for children.
Does anyone else have anything for Jared Griffith? We'll move on to Public Works and Fire, Mark Patton-Fuss.
Mayor Council, uh, I don't have a lot for you tonight. We did start to try to make a little ice, but with the forecast, don't hold your breath, we're gonna see ice before Christmas because they're talking thirty for a high, what, this weekend and next week, so we'll try to keep the kids happy, but, uh, yeah, we've got to play with snow a little bit and working on trucks and paperwork and mapping in the shop. Other than that, I don't think I, uh, have anything particular for Public Works unless you have anything for me.
Other than that, I don't think I have anything particular for Public Works unless you have anything for me. That pickup that we sold.
Can't, not during the meeting.
That pickup that we never did sell this summer, we have on MINDOT, it'll sell Friday. So I don't know if anyone, I never did say it got sold. It'll leave us Friday. It's up over a decent price now, so we just never. We used it this summer with the kids, so that's why we had kept it, so. Do that. Fire, we have Santa parade on December twenty, Wednesday, December twenty-first, we're doing our fire parade around town. So we're doing, I think, six o'clock to the south and after seven to the north, how we're staging it. I think, I'll find out tomorrow night for sure from the guys. We'll have candy canes, we got those donated again. Other than that, unless you have something for me on either topic.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mark? We'll move on to Administration with Sarah Brown.
Just a couple of things. Annual appointments will be next month, so we will put some advertisements out for that. Please send people to the city hall or have them give me a call or email if they're interested. We're always looking for people for multiple positions. Council Training, we'll have a session for our new members the second Tuesday in January, and I'll work on that. We'll actually bring our attorney out. They actually do that for us, free of charge, and, and myself and the attorney will, will go through that training. It's very helpful, refresher for everyone involved. And then after today's meeting, we do have a joint planning board meeting that Councilmember Swanson and Gondek will attend with me regarding the subdivision of the new industrial park property. So we'll subdivide that property at the joint planning board, and then I did serve notice of our intent to annex that property. And then we'll work on plating and layout and all that fun stuff that goes with it. So that'll be after today. Hopefully, you know, we'll be able to make that resolution or that action at the next council meeting, finalizing that annexation. Other than that, you know, I guess keep, you know, tabs on the office closings and stuff with the holidays. Some of the schedule gets a little bit different, so others will take any questions you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Sarah?
Has a representative or senators reached out to us after the election?
Yeah, I've actually, actually, I talked to Meckland earlier this week, or it was late last week. Not our rep, but regarding, we're looking at a couple of different language options. I have not heard from Schultz or Wiesenberg yet directly, but Meckland and Matthews are working on a couple of things, too, with them for us. We're just looking at if there's any language options at the state legislative level that we could pursue that might make that P-SIG money flow more smoothly for us in case the timing of the bonding bill does come later, which is very possible. So they're well aware, I hope on the twenty-fifth, if we can get down to the Capitol, we can meet with all those officials. And I know some of you have individually reached out to some of them as well, and I encourage you to keep doing that. It, you know, when we did this last cycle and we did the other eight million, the direct appropriation, persistence is key, you know. Keep reminding them, so I'd encourage you as well to continue that.
I talked to them both, and then the conference that Sarah and I attended, basically, don't, that special, or the bonding bill's not going to get passed until the end of session. So that was kind of their, Democrats are going to be in control, that's something the Republicans got to leverage anything with. So if it gets done before end of session, it's going to be a plus.
I think that's why, too, we're trying to look at other pieces of language that maybe the legislature will take up. We're not the only one that's in a pickle like we are with this funding, so a number of projects are having issues like ours. So maybe if we can get another option, that would be good for us.
Okay, nothing else for her? Any old business? Any new business? Okay, at six oh-three, we will recess the regular city council meeting to conduct a truth in taxation hearing related to the twenty-twenty-three budget and tax levy. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Okay, state your name and address and your concern.
Sarah Mozoff, two-three-eight Elm Drive. My concern is the proposed twelve percent tax increase is extremely high, considering the citizens, the Foley are going to be taxed, we're going to be taxed at the county rate, and then I believe a school levy. It's just getting really, really hard to afford to live in this town if we just keep making it higher and higher taxes. I don't really believe that we're seeing a lot of improvements, and so I'd like you to reconsider. I know you don't have to do the twelve percent, and I know it's inevitable to have some sort of tax increase because that's what the state does and the city does and everyone does, but twelve percent seems really, really high, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Okay, at six oh-four, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting. Is there a motion adopting Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-one approving the twenty-twenty-three tax levy?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
So brought the calendars.
Boom.
Right there. I thought you guys said that you didn't need the little ones, but I got them for some reason, but if you guys want them.
I'll take one.
You can take them. I mean, the calendars are still good for something when you guys.
Yeah, no, I just have to have one, I don't have a square on like that. I'm looking for one, yeah.